All right. Welcome. Regular council meeting, Monday, October 6, 2025. It's 5:01 PM. And I request you to turn your cell phones down or off. You get a real call, please. There, Trace.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Hedrickson.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
I am here. Thank you. Stand. Take your hats off, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing, please.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for your blessings and your presence here tonight, Lord, that you would just grant the council wisdom in all the decisions that need to be made. And, Lord, we, your word says we have not because we ask not. We could use a little bit of rain these days, and so we just ask for some rain in Jesus' name.
Amen.
You looked at the rain forecast, don't you?
The rain forecast was not done.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Approval agenda, we get a motion, please. Oh, wait a minute. We want to move, we want to move our correspondence, one up to right below approval of the minutes. Get a motion to change.
Motion to make adjustments as amended.
Say.
All in favor? All right, okay. Get approval for the minutes. Get a motion, please. Or for the agenda. Get a motion, please.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I want to say one thing before I, I know I was invited to the Citizens, South Polite Concerned Citizens Meeting, and I did not attend. And I know people on Facebook are wondering why I didn't attend their meeting. And I probably would feel differently if it wasn't a, I probably would feel a bit more interested in what the members on the city, on the South Polite Concerned Citizens would have to say. If they hadn't stood up here for the last year and on Facebook criticized every combination, everything that we've said and did up here. And then this is me talking, this ain't the rest of these guys, he can do what they want. But against, and made us feel that we're not protected, made residents feel that they weren't protected. Now, why should the concerned citizens of South Polite ever do anything positive to help to transfer from the South Polite Fire Department to the town of Polite? With all that negativity from the concerned citizen and union employees of Polite, we ended up with actually a very negative situation for the last year. And so we will, we will, the contract was doomed almost from the start. And but we were always protected with our fire department and with our ambulance service. Our ambulance service this last year was 100%. They worked 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, with two qualified people there at all times. And fire department, we had six units up there in Polite that would come down. We had Rockton, Roscoe, and we had Mavis. So we were all protected, and we never had to worry about anything that did not work out. And but that was because, because the last in 2024, our ambulance service was not 100%. There was many times that our station was left unprotected with people there that was one person maybe certified, the rest not. People that couldn't give out medicine. There was unqualified people that could drive engines, have engine driver. Other times, they were giving out the wrong medicine. Fire suppression equally was as good as the ambulance service this last year. It seems to me that all involved that was more important to the concerned citizens of South Polite, it was that if the service was, that who was providing the service and not whether they were protected or not. We will now find out that the six-station combination would have been a great thing for, if we would have completed contracts up there. We are now in a position where a fire district is out because we don't have enough time to go to each board and present each board with our idea of joining them or some. And surrounding distance, the option, that would have been Rockton and Roscoe. What we might do now is we already passed a bill to, or ordinance to hire a chief. That is, not saying that we are going to hire one, it just gives us the money to hire it. We will look at that. If we get a new chief, we'll look at the different options we have. One of the options is, one of the options will be, will have a chief, and he will, we will supply people to work with him, or we'll contract it out to the people like Metro or whatever. Another option will be have Metro bring in a chief and their employees. Maybe we'll bring in their employees and use our chief if we hire one. Maybe there'll be a combination or a different combination of all four. We don't know yet, but with all the negativity, we are in the process now of going forward and get a combination, a hybrid of one of the four. But whatever we decide, we're in a position now, it's going to cost us more money. The money is not, I mean, we had a, we had a year that was less than a million dollars that we paid for fire service. Now this next year, we can look to pay more because no matter what we do, it's going to be more expensive. I wanted to say that before because I figured there was, people are going to be here that wanted to know why I wasn't at the, why I wasn't at their meeting. Do you want to say something, Kenny?
I just wanted to give an update on where we're at. We've been dealing with the Illinois Fire Association to set up for a hiring process for a chief, search process. We hope to have that application process in place by the end of the week, and that'll carry on for about a month. Again, we'll be meeting with one of the contract carriers later on this week to look at options for personnel if we decide to go through a contract search. But our, our goal is to have our own chief, our own department can be back up and operating. Again, part of the reason we're in this position is that it is very hard to find applicants for the fire service. And we're hoping that maybe this next option to hire will have a better turnout for applications. But bottom line is, we're starting from scratch. And we were hoping that having a merger with another district or contract with another district would have saved us, but it didn't work. And biggest portion of that problem is the fact that nobody seems to be able to get people. With that, we're starting from scratch. And as the mayor said, it's going to be costly, but we have no other option now.
All right, thanks, Kenny, buddy. All right. You have a public comment. Stand, give your name. Get three minutes. Say what you want. Raise your hand. Okay, go ahead, sir.
All right. My name is Don Decker, and it's good that you're talking about the fire department. You guys have voted to get a group from the Illinois Chiefs, correct?
Yes.
All right. Who's going to pay for that? The citizens of South Polite?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've seen several of you at these concerned, South Polite Concerned meetings. All right. The group that you dislike has over 150 years of fire service. And they right now have a chief and seven people that will come with them, and they haven't even discussed the money. You guys have spent this money, I chief and Metro, and these guys would have done it free, no cost to the city of South Polite. You claim you listen to the citizens. Do we have to come to every meeting to see what you guys have planned for the city? You, you guys were voted in to serve us and keep our best interest for the community. Don't you trust the people of South Polite to help you? Maybe you know or you don't know, but South Polite is the laughing stock of the area. You expect mutual aid, but we can't give it back. So it's a one-way street for all the other departments. In closing, I just want to ask, why do you tell us some people will be at our meetings and they don't come? And in closing, what I want to say is an old quote. The old quote goes, first time, shame on you. Second time, shame on me. Winner, and also too, there's been a person in this room that has said, money is no concern. So why are we taking so long to get a pardon?
Sir, may I address these issues? Can I address these issues? Can I address these issues with you?
Sure.
Okay. Number one, I have attended those meetings before. And quite frankly, I will yell that shut up. Secondly, I met with two members of that organization just a couple of weeks ago and discussed that chief and those personnel. I told those individuals at that time, if they wanted to set up a meeting with him, I would be more than happy to sit down with him and discuss his proposal. But we were still going to go ahead and look at hiring a chief. Now, if this gentleman's a chief, he has the option to apply for that position. And if he's got a program set up that would save us, that's points for him. But that was addressed with those individuals from that group.
And I know you have been at some meetings.
I've been.
And I don't remember anybody at that meeting tell you to shut up.
Well, Mr. Jackagisky did, on no uncertain terms.
But we'll, we'll set up a meeting with them, just like we set up a meeting with Metro. Because, and like I've said before, and I've said it on, even though we put it on Facebook, which I hate, I said that we're looking at all options, all options. Because the move we make now would be the final move. You, you probably won't get another chance because we, like you say.
And I, I remember you were at.
I was at meetings, yeah. But I just didn't go, no.
And the group showed you Metro.
Yeah.
If you claimed you never.
I never saw it. I never did see it because I wasn't in the negotiating, but I am now. And now what, this is what I showed on that contract that you're talking about, was the third paragraph there, and I, the third paragraph, it says, "We don't have the employees now, but they will trickle in." And I said, "We need employees now. We don't need them to trickle in." Just like I told Metro, yes, a few, a week ago, when I called them and talked to them. I said, "When you come in here for a meeting, you have, have your information, have it right, because we're not going to be jacking around with this stuff. We're going to be moving forward with it, and we want to make sure we got a solid contract." And thank you, sir. All right, moving on. Yeah, I said, moving on, public, anybody else?
Um, I just had a comment on Rock River, names, calls, your name.
Name.
Sharon, you getting? Do you want to?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Okay. I've lived in the community almost 23 years, and in the last, I would say, five years with Rock River, the problem with yard stuff seemed to get worse and worse. And at night sometime, people have dogs or whatever, and they will knock over stuff. And I don't mind that. What I do, because I'm, I'm an early riser, I get up at 4:30, what I do normally would just take it out to the street because I, I'm a homeowner. So I get people just walking down the street and everything, so that's not a real big issue with me. But my recent issue, and I have a lot of cameras around my house, and I put up more on the front because of the Rock River disposal issue. My son rolled it out there right at about 8 o'clock and 8:00 AM. And then one truck came to get the regular trash in the brown container. And then there was two more trucks came, and they just passed my green trash cans. You know, they're marked, they're been the same ones I've used out there for the last 10 years. And so when, I'm just asking, and also I called and complained about saying that you missed the trash, my yard stuff again. So they took my name and number, and they were supposed to call me back. So this time, I didn't even get a call back.
All right. I tell you what, from now on, call the city hall and tell them to get ahold of Rock River. Because any complaint that we get from residents, what we'll do is we'll talk to them, and I'll tell you, we'll get it done. Because we've, I've had to call them myself and, and, you know, a situation like that where they passed up or knocked, left the garbage can tipped over in the road and stuff like that there. I told them, I said, "That's their part of the contract, make sure they pick up all the, around the garbage can and everything else."
Well, they don't do any of that.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of that, okay? Just call, give your name, address to whomever you talk to, and then we'll.
Right, and I, I went in and I talked to Jennifer today.
All right.
And when I got back home, I emailed her the three videos that I had. Because I have it on camera too. You know, where my son rolled it out there, and then where they just passed them.
All right, okay. That's your three months. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, stand up and give your name, please.
Ralph Skalik. In reference to Kenny, that he was asked to not comment was because the question was asked of another party. And that was, I was at the same meeting with you, Kenny. I was there also. And I, I think they were wrong in that attitude toward you. I will give you that 100%. But the question was asked of a different member, and you were answering the question you were asked not to, the question was asked of someone else. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
That was the second time. Prior to that, I was just told to shut up.
That's all right. Well, it's over with.
It doesn't matter.
It's over with.
I'll state that, so we can straighten the record.
Okay. We got it. Anybody else? All right.
I'm going to stand up.
Sure.
Because I just can't keep quiet. A little quieter.
Sure.
I'm just tired.
What's your name, man?
Oh, I'm sorry, Patty Zidell, 305 South Polite. I'm just tired of the back and forth about this fire stuff. I just have to say it. I'm, I'm frustrated. Let's just move forward, if all I want to say.
That's what we're trying to do.
I think it's frustrating.
Thank you. Yeah. You probably isn't as tired of it as I am, but we're moving forward as best we can, and we, we will make sure it's done right. All right, anybody else? If not, I'm moving on. Public comments over with. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting for September 2nd, 2025, and September 15th, 2025. Get a motion, please.
Motion.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Yeah, we're going to move up Correspondents' Presentation of the 2024 Audit of Lauderbach, and amen. Please stand. Where do you want to stand? It don't matter. Whatever you want.
Here's okay if not everyone's okay with that.
Okay.
Well, thank you for having me. My name's Don Shaw, audit principal on the job. So I first want to thank Don and the entire team for all their help in making this yet another successful audit year. Without their help, this is not possible. So thank you. Next, going to go through the annual financial report with you, which is the current impact that you received. And if you turn to page one, or sorry, page four, you'll find our Lauderbach name and letterhead. This is our independent auditorium, which provides a modified opinion due to the fact that the city does not report on full cloud gas, B75, which is consistent with prior years. To the exception, this modification is otherwise clean audit year, in which we found no issues within internal controls or the numbers as they were presented. If you push about four more pages, you will run into the management discussion and analysis. And this section really provides a summary of how the year performed in narrative form. So if you have questions on fluctuations from year to year, from what the numbers truly mean, this is where you want to go find those answers. I'm next going to have you skip ahead to go over your income statement, which starts on page 30. About three quarters of the way down the page, you'll notice that the general fund, which is your main operating fund, had a operating increase of about $2.1 million. This was offset by transfers out to your capital projects and your IHDA fund. So you're left with a net increase of $833,000 in the current year. The next section will be the notes of financial statements, which begin on page 40. And the notes will provide further details of how we came up with the financial statement with supporting schedules. Within there, you're going to find your long-term debt and your capital expenses. If I can go through the notes with you tonight, I'll have you skip ahead all the way to page 90. Page 90 is the start of your budgetary information. So if you want to see how a specific fund performed based on what was budgeted, this is where you want to see those comparisons. Anyone have any questions?
I know Don never lets us skip ahead when he gives a report.
I'm trying to say I'm not always good side.
I have no questions.
Well, that's fine. Thank you, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right, thank you. Thanks very much. Taking note, Don, you taking notes of that? All right. Thank you. All right. Before we, approval of, we got to pay the bills. Approval of the claims to be paid, September 13, October 3, 2025, for the amount of?
I'd like to note, first of all, as I do when they're larger than normal, $380,000 is for the purchase of a new street sweeper. So that's why it's lower than normal.
Which has been running nonstop. Tracy, please.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Hedrickson.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Prentice. Mayor Fisher.
Yes. What, what I wanted to say from now on, let's, I mean, we don't have to do it this week, but from now on, the commissioners will give a short little report, each commissioner of their department, of what happened between, between meetings, you know, so that nobody's left out, everybody hears what's going on. And if you want to do it this week, we can do it, or next week, it's up to you. Or next meeting, it's up to anybody. Okay? All right, we can wait till next meeting then. All right, get, Sonya, you want to take over for city administrator report, please?
I shall, Mayor. I just have a couple of quick things. The first thing is I wanted to just add to Commissioner Morris's comments on the chief search. Where we are at in that process is we continue to meet weekly at least or more, if needed, with the Chiefs Association. And then Kenny and I, you know, kind of follow up with that, and if there's things that we need to provide more feedback on, we will give that to the Chiefs Association. Where we're at right now in that process is we were given a lot of examples on what our hiring promotional materials could look like, and we've kind of narrowed it down to what we think are the most relevant things. We don't need it to be the longest thing ever, but we also don't want to skinny it up so much so that our candidates understand exactly the situation that our fire department is in right now. So we have given that information to the Chiefs Association. And for any folks that may have, you know, interested parties that may want to apply, we certainly want all of those interested candidates to submit. What we will get at the end of the day is the most qualified of that pool for then us to send to the assessment center. If we do everything right, by the end of this week, that publication should be promoted. And the most common places where they pull applicants from are, one, the Illinois Chiefs Association webpage. They have a board, and then a hiring board or a job posting board. And then also, there is a national page that used to be called Great Lakes Daily Dispatch, but now it is more of a national approach. I think it still calls the Daily Dispatch. But they said that those are the, the two locations where most of their candidates come from. So if there are people in the community who may or may not be interested in that position, please send them to those directions. We will also try to get it on the Delta HR job board. We'll also put it on our own city webpage and on our own city socials. So that's where it will be. And if we do everything right, it should be by the end of the week. Those postings will last for at least 30 days, and then we will start the review process while the Illinois Chiefs Association will, they will give us the most qualified candidates. All right, so that is a refresher on the chief's update. I'm just going to continue to give that every meeting, Mayor, just so everyone knows where we're at, that nothing more critical, so tiny. Second thing on my list is if you have not been to the nature of the conference, we were gifted by the Rock River Area Art Council, a seven-foot mosaic woodpecker. It's a beautiful piece of art that students that participated in the Spark Summer Camp were able to create themselves. So we will be having a world migratory event where we will kind of unveil, but it's still there. You can go see it now. It's a beautiful piece of art. I know that my voice, Lenny, is very excited that we finally have a woodpecker representative at the conference. I got that for you, I will take it there. And then also, I will comment, since Commissioner Allen commented on the speaker purchase, just want to remind everyone that we had budgeted $420,000 expecting the arrival of our ambulance to be here. Because of the delays in manufacturing going on two and a half years now, the ambulance is not expected until the middle of 2026. So what we did was we spent the capital money that we had intended to spend on the street sweeper in 2026, $380,000. We use the ambulance money to pay for that now, knowing that we weren't going to get our ambulance until the middle of 26. So hopefully, we're still on track for the middle of 2026. Don't look at me like that, Chief.
Our grill.
The money will be there. It is just shifted accounts now because we knew we weren't going to get the ambulance in time, so we might as well get the street sweeper up in action, the one that we have was really band-aided along beyond its usefulness. And then the last item that I wanted to mention is our trunk and treat event. This event is one that is put on by our Parker and Rec Advisory Committee each year. Bear with me, I have to hold up Spanish. But we have put flyers out into Alder Prairieville and South Polite schools, up to like sixth grade, I think. So those will be going out in schools in the coming week. It's Saturday, October 26, from 3:00 until 4:30 at South Polite City Park. Last year, I know that we had over 50 vendors, and it is always a very, very well-attended following local community event. So look for flyers. This will hit our social and our webpage this week. If you have any questions, feel free to let me know, or you can call Commissioner Prentice on this. This is really his baby this year, but this will be our third annual, thank Commissioner Morris. Yeah, so it just keeps growing every year. It's always a pleasure and always a wonderful event. And if no one has any further questions for me, I will.
No, it's perfect timing for a street sweeper. We, you know, this has been needed for a really long time, and been busy on it every day that I've seen so far. That's good.
So Deputy Chief Snyder will provide our fire quarterly report, if there's nothing else for me, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, quarterly report for the last three months. I think you all have a copy attached to the call volume. I didn't get this month in there, but it's at the end of the report. Special events that we've been maintaining, ambulance EMS services at football games. That's going to stand by if you want to make any calls, but we're doing what we can to get there and hang out and be seen. We've also been working with schools, Witness Fire Girls, at all the different schools. Regular maintenance department updates. Been a lot going on with that. We've been working hard to continue to maintain and upgrade the equipment that you guys have given us to be able to hand over quality equipment when it comes time. Ambulance 30 got a new DPF system, a diesel particulate filter, which is the mandatory government stuff, radiator. Both of that cost a couple of dollars, but it is important as we don't have any new ambulances yet. Ambulance 30 also received new brakes and tires. Ambulance 20, the AC in the patient compartment went down. We had to do a lot of rebuilding of that to get that back up and running after that short weekend that we had both ambulances down. Both ambulances were in for their six-month state DOT inspection and passed. Both ambulances have had their state IDHP inspections and passed. Narcotic safes were installed in both the ambulances, which is something they've never had, which is a really nice. Rear dual tire replaced on Engine 30, who's a primary engine. Rear dual tire replaced on engine thirty, who's a primary engine, due to some tread damage. Annual pump testing on all three fire pumps have taken place and passed. Annual pump and chassis maintenance for those three pumping apparatuses was done, i.e. fluids and filters through the, through the whole engine and pump system. Annual ladder testing of ground ladders has taken place and all have passed. The annual ladder testing of the aerial, it's five-year annual, which is a more in-depth annual, was done and passed. It does have some recommended needed repairs. We'll work on those as time allows. We've also ordered new tires for that aerial. The current tires on it were about fifteen to twenty years old when we were ready for the people to date. So we're going to get those replaced. I just got to get it over the shop to get them done. Last three months, we had a total of six fire calls. Broke down for you right here. Two burning obstructing materials, same location, I think one was a rekindle. False call, just barbecuing, no issue. Smoking appliance with no fire damage and no issues other than the fire extinguisher for the residence unit. Small rush fire that was out on arrival, squirrel versus pole power line issue. And one car versus pole with an engine fire in it, was extinguished by fire personnel. EMS calls for this report, for this quarter, one ninety-five and fifty-eight for the month of September. You'll notice on the back sheet there that I didn't have September in there. And I know that we were looking at ordinance for lift assists, so I kind of gave you guys a little snapshot of this last quarter for lift assists. There was a total of thirteen lift assists for this last quarter, which I would say is probably the average. Six of those were to three different residents twice. Only one to an assisted living or care type facility, and the other six were just various random calls for lift assists. So just perspective, now that can drastically change from time to time, but I thought it would be worth for you guys for a little information for tonight. That concludes my quarterly report. And if you have any questions.
I might add that South Lloyd football team has been very, thank you for the point, the South Lloyd football team has been very successful lately. They're undefeated. And South Lloyd girls volleyball team is also undefeated, so they'll both be going for their championships. I believe the juniors are too, in sixth grader, I see that as the ball.
I believe there's a game tonight.
Pardon me?
I believe there's a game tonight.
The girls are not undefeated, mayor, but they are.
Only a one loss, yeah, I do, yeah, I do, sorry about that. I know I've been.
False advertisement.
Yeah, I know that, but their sports are doing real well in South Lloyd. Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, we'll use that, we'll ask you about the system a little bit. Okay, number one, new business. Discuss approval bid opening for Miller Street.
There we go.
Unfinished business.
Oh, yeah. I crossed that all the way in.
This is, for this item is right, just for the record, so that council is aware. This is an item that was previously on an agenda.
We're going to lay it over.
I know that, yep.
Oh, okay.
This is an item that was previously on an agenda and was not passed. In order for it to come back for reconsideration, a council member needs to ask that it, that that occur through conversations with Commissioner Edelman. He has asked that the residential real property regulation ordinance come back for additional consideration. We've had a number of conversations with Commissioner Edelman regarding his concerns regarding the ordinance, and made some amendments to the ordinance in recognition of his concerns. It's also my understanding that Commissioner Prentice would like to have some ongoing input into this matter. So staff's recommendation is that the matter just be moved and seconded and laid over for purposes of this evening, and then it can appear on the next agenda in October.
Move to lay it over.
Move to lay it over, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Get a motion to move to lay it over.
Motion.
A second.
All in favor? Okay, we're laying over that. That's been an item we've kicked around for quite a while. But Courtney's out in San Diego on business, so he said that when he comes back, he'd sure like to be here for that. All right, new business, now we'll start that. Discussing motion items, discuss approve bid opening for Miller Street for Lot Twenty, pen oh four oh six, one seventy-nine oh one nine, and Lot Twenty-One with pen oh four oh six, one seventy-nine oh two oh. Motion, please.
There were no bids received. So we'll have to regroup and decide how we're going to move forward with this. It had to be on as a bid opening, because it was advertised to be a bid opening, but we did not receive any bids as of today for these two lots on Miller Street. So we'll talk with staff and see if there's another way that we can maybe move these two lots along in getting them sold.
Do we get the neighbors involved in this on this?
Usually, I think in the past, there has been an effort to reach out to the neighbors. I don't know if there was in this case, but we'll definitely regroup and see what we can do on that.
I think that'd be a benefit to get the neighbors and see if they want to take care of that lot, give it to them, or make them pay a minimal fee or something.
Two lots.
Two lots, are they together?
Yeah, that can sort together, but that's two lots, that's together. We'll come up with ways to better promote the effort.
Okay, all right, sound good. All right, motion, lay it over?
You can, we can lay it over.
Got that?
No, it'll just be on another agenda.
Moving on. Discuss approval request for homecoming parade for the city of South Lloyd, or South Lloyd High School on October tenth, twenty twenty-five, one PM. Motion, please.
No move.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? Nope, South Lloyd's get afraid. All right. Discuss approve a request for the church picnic for fellowship church from three PM to six PM October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Anybody, you want to talk about it? Go ahead, set up, please. Yeah, we can give everybody some information here.
Thank you. I am with Feed Fellowship. We are, this is our first time doing something like this. We just feel led to do something within the community. This is Lori, she's part of my community members. This is a free event to anybody attending. Feed Your Soul out of Fort Atkinson slash Danville will be providing all of the food, hamburgers, hot dogs, brats, chips, all that, all that good stuff. We'll have like carnival games for you, the kids, the participants, the family, music going on, just a fun time for the community to part.
Am I correct in saying you're up here on Blackhawk up on the hill?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, okay, well, that's good. Anybody?
Tim, I know it doesn't say, you know, but you don't need anything from our public works department in terms of like barricades or.
No, we plan on using our big grassy lot. We'll have a cutting zoo, it'll be in the front part there, so, you know.
Okay.
We plan on planning a factory.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Nope, pass. You got the picnic. Try to get up there. Discuss approve budget timetable, that's. All right, get a motion.
No move.
Second.
Give a second. Ryan, give a second, so.
The draft is in your packets.
We got it, we don't have to go through it.
Yeah, nothing changed from the typical format that Don typically hands out. I do feel it feels a little tighter this year. I don't know if that's just a number of weeks and the months that are left. We've just had five Mondays, so maybe it feels tighter, but follows similar times and dates as years past. And also, this is the same exact draft that I provided at the last council meeting, just as a, hey, take a look, make sure we're not messing anything up, but seems all. Coach, are any further comments on that?
It's a tight schedule, but, you know, once we start basically in November, you're meeting almost every Monday, so.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? All right, passes. We got your timetable done. Discuss approve ordinance twenty-eight sixty-eight, amending section ten, basic district intent regulations and usage, chapter one eighteen, zoning regarding allowance of mixed-use development in a various zoning district. Get a motion, please.
Voice, second.
Who's got this?
I do.
Sonya? Shawna, do you?
So it occurred to us, we had a resident that owns a property, that's a commercial property. Years ago, there was an apartment in the upstairs of the building and a storefront in the bottom. The property has been vacant for a number of years, and he asked if he could have someone move into that apartment. It occurred that during the rezoning, or the zoning ordinances, that that was locked out. So this is an ordinance to add that back in.
Okay. But everything's the same, it's just you're adding this back. You had taken this out, now you're putting it back.
Yeah, it got locked out. I'm not sure if, if it allowed for it in the last, in the last zoning code or not. I did not look at that, but this is something that needs to go back in or needs to be added.
So doing this allows for this person to rent out to base?
Yes. And there are several places throughout the city that are commercially zoned with an apartment above them, so it affects more than just one property.
All right, Tracy?
Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice, Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Yes, discuss approve ordinance, whoops, discuss approve ordinance twenty-eight sixty-nine, imposing lift assist fees for the city of South Lloyd. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
I can talk about this, mayor, if you'd like me to. So this is some legislation that came out of the state of Illinois that allows for municipalities to charge in certain circumstances lift assist fees to nursing homes after a certain number of calls for lift assists have occurred. It would be effective if approved January first of twenty twenty-six, and it would require a certain number of lift assists to occur first prior to the imposition of any fee. That is built into section two definitions and section three imposition of the lift assist fee. If the fee were imposed to any assisted living facility or nursing home, it would just be the actual cost of personnel and equipment occurred by the department in rendering the lift assist. This would not be charged to the circumstances that the chief outlined earlier in terms of residential properties. It would just be for assisted living facilities or nursing homes. And again, it would only be the actual cost to the city for the service after.
Six.
Six, thank you.
I can answer that too, mayor. So over the weekend, we didn't rely a lot of data, but I can tell you how we just got it put on an agenda. When we talked to Chief P's months ago when this legislation got published, it was determined that there may or may not be just one or two places in South Lloyd that are actually for-profit entities that should provide their own staff to conduct these lift assists. And it wouldn't be charged if we were transporting that person who had fallen to a provider.
Right.
So it's really just if they call us to help someone get back up into a chair or a bed, when really they should have staff on hand if they're assisted living, rather than take advantage of a system that pulls our limited EMS and fire resources out of the station to do repetitive lift assists. So we didn't put a lot of numbers behind this. Deputy Chief Snyder was able to whip up these, these numbers for lift assists pretty quickly today, because I didn't ask him to do that on Friday, so thank you for that, chief. But really, this was a conversation that just happened between Chief P's and I, and there are very rare circumstances where we're probably hitting six of these at Fair Oaks, for example, but, you know, that is the trend, and that's why this legislation was put in place, is that lift assists continue to get more and more relied upon municipal fire departments. You also asked, mayor, if our neighbors were doing this. I can tell you that the city and the township, Chief P's told me today, that they have been billing for residential repeat and two facilities or two nursing homes or nursing facilities for at least ten years. So they have been doing it in their state. Harlem Roscoe does not think they will need it, because they only have one place that they do this for, and that's North Point. And he said that they rarely have calls there, because North Point does provide their own staff to help with lift assists. And I did talk to Chief Wilson as well in Rockton, and he anticipates this to be passed in November. So that's kind of the background I was able to whip up today, but it, when it came up a couple of months ago, Chief P's and I just said, you know, absolutely, this is the way of the land. There's more and more of these, and you don't want it to get to a point where it is continuously draining the limited resources we already have. If I miss anything, you've got to.
Well, this is important to have on hand. It's not looking to go up and charge unless we absolutely deem it necessary. It's a tool to be able to help these facilities get the appropriate staffing and not become a drain on the fire department with repetitive calls. So it's really a tool, and we've used it to where it's more or less, hey, we're going to start charging here at some point shortly if you are not able to staff your own business appropriately. So whether you actually ever have to use it, it's just another tool in the toolbox that helps keep everybody on the same.
You seem pretty happy with it, so.
It's a great idea.
All right.
As I said, it's not anything that, it would be more or less up to the chief to say, hey, this is somewhere we need to start looking into this. So it's a tool in the toolbox.
I also failed to put this in your package, but the Illinois municipally did put out a fact sheet on this, so that I printed like ten extra, so.
I read it. I've seen it already. Okay, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice, Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hedrickson.
Yes.
Yes, discuss approve resolutions sixty-six forty, approve and accept an annual audit of fiscal year of twenty twenty-four. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we just went through that, didn't we?
Yes.
Don?
Yep.
Anything to say? Well, you got a good job. They told us everything was right. Said your numbers were right.
Yeah, it's just a mayor approval here, so it can be filed.
Okay. All right, sound good to me. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hedrickson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice, Mayor Fitzgerald.
Yes, discuss approve place in the file, an actual report of police and fire pensions from Lot Vac and amen. Acue. Okay, motion, please.
No move.
Second.
And that's what we're doing again, just.
Yeah, you had a presentation earlier, but it couldn't be accepted, because until the audit was done, those numbers were not firm. So now that the audit has sent those numbers, as they were presented.
Okay. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Hedrickson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice, Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Yes, discuss approve resolution sixty-six forty-one, approve an agreement with Winnebago County Health Department for Tobacco Enforcement Program Services. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Chief.
Do you have to sit our annual agreement with the health department? They reimburse us for overtime and credit takes to Rock River's compliance checks.
Okay. That's good. Somebody's giving us money for a change. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice, Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hedrickson.
Yes.
Yes, discuss approve resolution sixty-six forty-two, approve a commercial security systems and services agreement with Alarm Detection System, Inc. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Tracy, I'll wait a minute better. Somebody, Jeff, you going to explain that?
Yeah, so we found that the city did three years of the service contract for our gates. Our gates have computer cameras on with keypads, and to maintain the service, that service covers anything and everything, including, we did have a lightning strike a while back, and they took care of everything, replaced the cameras that were needed to be replaced, keypads and everything. This is just maintaining that service contract, because the city is no longer obligated to pay that, and they didn't really do a great job of contacting us about this coming up. Came up on kind of short notice, but here we are, and I think it's well worth the service so that we can continue to have those working in proper order, not extremely cheap, but it's still going to keep those gates working, so we can open them.
Looking through that. What is the price on that?
Laura should know, because Laura spends a lot of time at the twelve hour. Make sure we have a lapse in coverage here, so we don't give out any issues.
Two hundred and forty a month, I think it's twenty-eight eighty.
Yes, and we'll do an annual amen.
Okay, sure. Amen. All right, uh, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Edington.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice, Mayor Fitzpatrick.
Yes, discuss approve resolution sixty-six forty-three, approve an amendment to franchise and garbage collection contract for Rock River Disposal Service Inc. For residential garbage collection. Motion please.
Motion, second.
I can cover this, Mayor, if you'd like to. So, this is a renewal of the um, garbage contract with Rock River Disposal for another ten-year term. Um, we did take a look at the other entities that could provide garbage service to the community as well as taking a look at pricing for other garbage haulers on the provide contracts to Rockton and Roscoe. This um, agreement, if approved by the city council, would come with a um, increase in the rate. Um, and also an increase to the yard waste collection. The rate effective January first, twenty twenty-six would go to eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents per month. Um, that gets paid by the city and is billed through the city onto the customers of the city through the um, various utility bills that are sent out. On every year thereafter, the service fee would increase by five percent. Yard waste would still remain on April first through November thirtieth of each year. Um, and that um, collection of yard waste cost, that would be a subscription service. So, it would be an option as to whether or not a property owner wanted that. If they wanted that subscription service, it would go up to eighty-five dollars per year. What we found in doing our research with regard to surrounding communities is that for the same service, which is the ninety-five gallon cart um, for garbage and the sixty-five gallon cart for unlimited recycling service, it was upwards of anywhere from twenty to twenty-three to twenty-six dollars per month um, in the other communities that we um, that we looked at. So, the rate that is being offered um, is substantially less than that of which is paid in the surrounding communities for the same service. Um, that is the reason for the five percent per year annual increase. You may recall that in previous contracts, Rock River Disposal receives an increase of either CPI or three percent. So, this would be an increase to five percent and that's a flat rate. We were able to negotiate them down. They did initially propose an eight percent increase.
For three years. It was eight, 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 and then fives, and we were able to negotiate all highs.
I see Roscoe's uh, or Cherry Valley's six percent increase.
That's correct.
So, you know, I mean, we are getting a break on that, but it's still expensive enough. Um, I think Loco and Roscoe is twenty-seven dollars and uh, Cherry Valley's twenty dollars and forty-seven cents and Rockton's twenty dollars and fifty cents. So, it's not like we're getting, we're getting a deal, but it's still, it still hurts. And I know if it's five percent in ten years, we get the contract, that's going up fifty percent. Which, the last time we signed the contract was in twenty fifteen, and I believe I was the only one here at that time. But uh, uh, we got criticized for it again, but uh, it was bec- and we found out that it was a really good deal because when the costs went up with the gas and everything else, we did do, um, we did make a good move and I don't and who knows, but this increase now for ten-year deal, uh, I believe it's probably, might be the same deal. We're hoping that it is, you know, because you can't do, you gotta, you gotta pick up the garbage and there's only a couple of people that will do it. Uh, anybody else? Go ahead. Brian?
I don't know how we keep going after residents for everything too, though. You know, I know, I know it's an increase, but I don't know. We keep going after them all the time. I know everything, you know, everybody's hurting.
I know it.
You know, I mean, with the craziness in uh, Washington, what's going on?
Yeah, I uh, I don't like it either.
It's gonna get crazy. You know, everybody's tight, you know, and how are we gonna go after people for not paying us?
It's gonna happen, you know that. I mean, it's, it happens now. It happens right now.
I know, and it's gonna get worse.
I, I don't have the answer there.
Yeah, I've been kicking this around after Sonya told me and I just, you know, 'cause I mean, you go up five percent every year, you're gonna be at thirty dollars now, thirty dollars in ten years.
Yep. And it's uh, true, and if they go.
But that, what's the sewer bill gonna be, you know?
I bet South Lloyd's a cheaper place to live than it is in Roscoe and Rockton.
I, I'm not even asking about that.
I know it. I'm just saying that.
About this. Is there any way where we can use some of the sunny side money and stuff?
But sunny side, where is, okay, where does sunny side money go? General fund, right?
General fund. You want the city to pay for individuals' bills? No, to help pay for some of that stuff, so you don't put it all on the residents. You know what I'm saying?
The city has to pay for the service, right? So, you're suggesting then we pay what? Percentage?
Not raise it all, really, this is.
And if, if I could, this item on the agenda for this evening is just approving a garbage collection contract with Rock River Disposal at the rates that they're willing to provide you the service. This is not going to change what your residents are charged. That's gonna come with a separate ordinance and a separate document down the road. So, you know, for purposes of your discussion this evening, um, you really should limit that discussion to what's on the agenda, which is just whether or not you wanna approve the contract with Rock River Disposal. Then, if you wanna have a separate discussion, maybe at the meeting next month, um, or at the, I'm sorry, the meeting in two weeks or at a meeting in November, you can certainly do that. Because as of right now, even if you approve an agreement with Rock River Disposal, that's not gonna change the rate that you charge to the customers because that's in your ordinance. So, just for that point of clarification, I think it's good to start to kind of open that discussion and maybe have your finance team, you know, prepare some information about what cuts you may need to make in order to subsidize some of this. But that would be a discussion that would occur at a later meeting. The only item before you tonight is whether or not you wanna renew with Rock River Disposal.
So, I think I can bring it back to you, Mayor. The, the idea was, are we putting this thing out for bid? Or are we going to renew? And this was the best possible rate that we could get from Rock River Disposal. Um, we are confident that if it goes out to bid, even the bid from Rock River will not start below twenty. So, the idea of getting a start in the eighteen, twenty-five ballpark with then five percent increases instead of eight, 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 and then fives. That was the best we could do for a renewal option, but I mean, we could certainly go out for bid too. Uh, but we know that the, just based on what our neighbors have gotten in the last year or two for rates, uh, that we will not see the eighteen again as a starting point.
And we will prepare an ordinance changing the rate if this is what the council decides to do with the garbage contract. And you can certainly have a conversation with your finance staff about, you know, options to potentially offset that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of doing this and I look forward to Brian's input on how the city can help offset garbage costs.
We'll have to come with some kind of plan, you know, 'cause we got, you'll have to meet with Don, see where you can come financially in difference. But uh, we understand that. I mean, we all feel the pinch there. So, we're just voting on whether to accept the contract from Rock River.
That's correct, yes. Yep, and that's a real call vote.
All right, Tracy, please.
Commissioner Edington.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice, Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Yes, um, yeah, now we'll discuss that other stuff next meeting. And now we'll, uh, what?
Yes, just one item for executive session.
Okay, well, we're gonna go to executive session, or are we gonna sit here?
Yep, we'll stay here for executive session and it's just item two for the second session.
Okay, uh, we're gonna ask everybody, if you would, please leave. It'll only be a few minutes and we'll be able to come back. What, what are you gonna say, Randy?
I wish I got a five percent raise every year.
I know, I know, I, I understand. I, I questioned that too.
Yep, we need a motion in a second to go into executive session.
Motion, second, all in favor? I'm going in executive session, six o'clock.
It'll be very quick. It'll be very quick.